This time I'll call a special call meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers to lead us in the board invocation, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Board members, please rise for your invocation.
Let us pray. Congress, Holy Father, as we come into this world tonight, there's trouble, there's uproar, but Lord, there's also peace. And we know that peace is given through the trust in you, the grace that you give us. Lord, we pray that you help us as a school board system in Haywood County. Lord, that we not only do what is good for children, as we've always tried to do, and Lord, this county has been very blessed, and we thank you for those many blessings. Lord, we know this is trying times for us all. We know with your guidance we will all pass through this, and it will make us better people. And Lord, we pray that we can help educate the children of Haywood County with the decisions are made, with the staff that we have, Lord. We have wonderful people in place. We have caring people in place that care so much for children, and they want to see children's success. We have parents, we have communities. Lord, this is all supported. But again, Lord, we want to fall back upon you and ask your guidance upon us as we make these decisions to help educate the children of Haywood County. And Lord, we know that you're in control and you will help us all through all this, Lord. We got to put our trust in you. And Lord, thank you for the citizens of Haywood County. Thank you for the students. Thank you for the wonderful children. Thank you for our staff that's working diligently to prepare and to make sure that things are safe, healthy, and happy. For our students, our custodians, our maintenance department, our bus drivers, our teachers, our administration, and us as a board that we try to make policies and procedures and help to make this the best school system in the country. All these things we ask in our guidance. Lord, we thank you for everything you've given us, and we will always give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I'd like to announce that Mr. Clark is joining us electronically, and that Ms. Barrett was not able to attend the meeting tonight. I'm going to read a statement from the Haywood County Schools Board of Education. On July 13th, this board made the decision to relieve Dr. Nolte of his daily duties due to a post on social media that could be considered offensive or insensitive. Further, this board directed Dr. Nolte to meet with members of the community, hear their comments and concerns, and develop a plan that would not only bring about healing, but also set the framework to address inequalities as we move forward. These actions were not taken as a form of punishment, nor as a political statement, but as a responsibility and duty of our elected offices. During this time, an investigation took place to examine the whole of the body of work of Dr. Nolte's tenure with Haywood County Schools. The investigation found no pattern of bias or racism. In fact, it is fair to say that Dr. Nolte's career with Haywood County Schools has been one of exemplary service and community-mindedness. Furthermore, Dr. Nolte, upon recognizing the post was hurtful to others, removed the post and quickly apologized. In our world today, the highest mark of the character is to recognize a mistake, apologize, and seek forgiveness. Tonight, Dr. Nolte has submitted the action plan as requested, and it will be attached with this announcement. He has met with members of the community, to include the Haywood County NAACP and the MLK Committee, as well as other citizens. Dr. Nolte and this board are committed to continue to review the policies of Haywood County Schools and make changes to ensure equality, excuse me, and equity for all students.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the foregoing statement, I make a motion that we reinstate Dr. Bill Nolte to his full duties effective immediately.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Burnett. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I heard Ronnie Clark chime in electronically as well. Is that correct, Ronnie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I hear you. Thank you. On the other announcements, well, at this time, I think Dr. Bill has some information for us from a Plan A. The plan. Excuse me.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A. I'm sorry. Dr. Nolte, would you please join us?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much. I would like to give a description of the plan and say that I appreciate your work and all of the support that you have provided in reinstating me to all of my duties. The purpose of the plan is to foster own unity and limit divisive bias regarding race and other critical social issues. Our students really do deserve a place where they can feel safe and be safe and where they are supported. The plan and subsequent work will focus on Haywood County Schools and our local community. This plan, as Mr. Francis mentioned earlier, was developed by talking to members of the community. I also spent some time on personal reflection, learning a lot more about bias, and meeting with over 30 people from the local community. There's a list of the people that I've met within the plan that we will publish. There were literally dozens of other people who reached out individually and offered ideas and support on moving forward. I want to thank everyone who took the time to share their thoughts and their feelings with me. That was very important, and I appreciate them doing that. This plan is a new starting point. Most people providing feedback spoke about being unified and working together and including a variety of voices, being better together, building relationships, building partnerships in the school system and in the community. The discussions included ideas about work in the local community as well as in the schools, and making progress on all of these areas is simply the right thing to do. The initial planned components will probably lead to other things, but there are four primary areas. First is to identify and implement some implicit bias training with the superintendent and the members of the Board of Education. The second area is to form a committee that would advise the superintendent regarding the system's work to foster unity and limit bias. The third thing, and I think Mr. Francis mentioned this in the board's comments, was to review our policies and make sure that they also foster unity and limit bias in our school system. We will call on the North Carolina School Boards Association and use them as a resource for this particular review. And then lastly, as an initial part of what we would do, we would establish some standards for materials that we select to teach the North Carolina state curriculum. And those standards would focus on unity, limiting bias, and also assuring that all the standards are taught. I want, again, to thank the board for doing your work, work that you needed to do, reinstated me. I am fully committed to moving forward on this issue. I appreciate you very, very much, and I will make sure that we get this entire plan to our technology people so they can post it with your comments.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nolte.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Board.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte.
Thank you. Under agenda adjustments, I would say that we would need to add Dr. Nolte to the items that we're going to be discussing tonight, of course, since he's been reinstated. And so anywhere it says Trevor Putnam or Jill Barker, he needs to speak at that, that would be the case. Are there any other agenda adjustments that we need to discuss? If not, entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Dr. Rogers made a motion. I hear a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So the agenda has been approved. We have had someone, several folks sign up to address the board. Announcements first. I'm sorry. Announcements? The announcements are next regular board meeting, Monday, August 10th, 2020, here at the Education Center, and it'll be at 7:00. Haywood Early College Graduation will be July 24th at 6:00 PM on the Haywood Community College Campus. And we have a special call board meeting on Thursday, July 30th, here at the Education Center at 6:00 PM. That may be an electronic meeting, but we will let everyone know in plenty of time. Are there any other announcements that need to be made? Now is the time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and/or personnel. Board, the first individual that has signed up is Danielle Van Hook, representing mother of two students. If they'll bring Ms. Van Hook in, please.
Good evening. I'm going to start my timer here.
Okay, thanks, Danielle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me see. We take the mask off. That'll be better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for hearing from me tonight. I'm Danielle Van Hook. I'm the mother of two boys that are in Haywood County Schools. One's a rising sixth grader at Waynesville Middle School, and the other's a rising fourth grader at Jonathan Valley Elementary. I come to you tonight as both a mother and a representative of my community of parents and educators in Haywood County. After the governor's announcement last week that school boards may choose up to a Plan B in their reopening policy, I wanted to supplement and enhance the stakeholder survey that was sent out to interested parties. To that end, I asked members of our community to relay to me their thoughts, questions, and concerns so that I could synthesize that information and provide it to you, our decision-makers on this issue. First of all, let me start by saying that none of us envies the position you all are in right now, but we know you will do your very best to make the best choice you can regarding our children while putting their best interests first and foremost. You are in an almost impossible position where you're balancing the risks of going back to school with the risks of not going back to school and realizing that going back to school is not going to look like what we remember pre-COVID. So the top concerns of parents and educators in my information gathering are divided into two categories: concerns about Plan B and concerns about Plan C. And I want to make sure we're all on the same page with what we're calling Plan B and Plan C. Plan B is the hybrid model of in-person and remote instruction, and Plan C is the all-remote instruction model. And so if you'll turn to page two on the letter that I gave you, as you can see, I've listed the top concerns under the Plan B hybrid model of some in-person and some online or remote instruction. Of course, number one is safety, and those are COVID-19 safety concerns. Number two would be lack of internet. Number three would be a lack of childcare. And then on the Plan C, which is the all-remote model, number one concern is what I'm going to call the safety net, and that's a lack of services to our students who need it most. And then number two and number three, again, concerns were lack of internet and lack of childcare. So what I would implore y'all to focus on tonight, as you go back and have your deliberations on what plan we're going to choose, is just to focus on the safety. And whether that means the COVID-19 safety, by that, I mean, of course, the protocols that have been given by the CDC, North Carolina Departments of Education, Health and Human Services, and our governor. And then, obviously, Dr. Putnam went into great detail on that on Monday night in the work session, and the other concerned parents and I that watched that, what I've done, and that starts on page two and goes through, page two and page three are really the in-depth concerns about the safety and the academic concerns about what we would do with Plan C. I mean, I'm sorry, Plan B. And so I'm not going to go into all of that with you, but I would just like to point that out that it's in here. And then as far as the safety net, if I could just tell you one more, about the safety net, this is the children who need the services the most because the way that our society, of course, is set up is we have the majority of socialization, mental health, physical health, spotting child abuse and neglect, nutrition, and everything is all in the public schools, and that's the safety net. So of course, we're going to be having children slip through the cracks on Plan B, which is either attending 50% or either only 25% or 50% of in-person instruction with Plan B, and then, of course, 100% remote with Plan C. So we're going to have children that slip through the cracks in both of those areas. We're going to have internet problems and childcare problems in both of those areas. But just wanted to give you this and tell you that what I think the basic to sum it all up is good luck. We know you're going to make the best decision, and hopefully this in-depth information will help you some more. But just to sum that all up, we believe the Plan C for now, based on what the assistant superintendent's told you on Monday night, it'd be easier to start with Plan C and then transition to a Plan B when we have a little more time to figure out how to do that in the best possible way. That would be what my group of parents would advocate for. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Rufus Thomas, representing support for Dr. Nolte.
Chairman Francis, Mr. Thomas and Ms. Timms withdrew their request to the board.
Okay. I've been informed that they have withdrawn their request to address the board. Ms. Tana Timms and Dr. Rufus Thomas have withdrawn their request to speak to the board tonight. Okay. Next, we have on our agenda Ms. Jill Barker.
Chairman Francis and members of the board, good evening. Tonight I bring to you an agreement. It's a standard agreement that we have had between Haywood County Schools and our Haywood County Health and Human Service Agency. This is a yearly agreement. There are no significant changes in this. Mr. Smithers has looked over this agreement, so at this time, I ask for your approval if you had an opportunity to look at that.
Okay. This time I'll entertain a motion. We approve the agreement as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the Haywood County Health and Human Service Agency agreement as presented.
Okay, Mr. Francis made the motion. I hear a second.
Mr. Burnett did the second.
Oh, you made the motion. I didn't catch you. I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion from Mr. Francis, second by Mr. Burnett. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? Mr. Smithers, you have something you wanted to add to that?
If y'all have a question.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions before we proceed?
I'd just like to say thanks again for working on this agreement, and we need them now just as much as we need them before. If not, we need them more now.
Absolutely. Sir, I agree.
And yeah, and we thank them for their help with cooperation with our public schools.
We love our relationship with them. It's been strong, and they've definitely been helpful to us of late, as always.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments before we vote? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I heard you, Mr. Clark. Thank you very much, Ms. Barker, and thank you much.
Thank you, Chairman Francis, members of the board, Mr. Smith.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have the A Team. Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, and Jill Barker.
Now, thank you, Mr. Francis, for that description. We'll come in one at a time so we don't violate the social distancing rules. I do want to begin by just thanking, I probably shouldn't thank individuals because there are so many who have worked on reopening. But certainly, Dr. Putnam has led the charge on the support services side, including safety and regulatory matters. Mrs. Barker has led the charge on the curriculum side. We've had a lot of help from Mr. Hines, making us aware of human resource rules and regulations related to employees, and then just a litany of other people, our supervisors and directors for elementary, middle, special ed, and vocational and other areas have provided input, and we appreciate them very, very much. I listened in on Monday when Dr. Putnam and Mrs. Barker led the work session. I just thought they did a phenomenal job of covering all of the options. And you could probably tell that they felt we had some mixed emotions about C and B. And so after that, they went back to work, and they did ask me a few questions along the way. And then this morning, we had a chance to talk. And we really think that our way forward is a way that helps us transition. I think the one thing that all of us who have worked on this understand is that we can't flip a switch and make everything normal. And so I bring to you our latest ideas. Certainly, these could be a recommendation if you wanted them to be. But we have reviewed all the state standards again and believe that a hybrid transition plan to transition us from the closing of schools that occurred last March needs to take place. The plan would transition from remote learning to in-person learning over a period of time, and I'll talk just a little bit more about that period of time in just a second. The school system would begin with remote learning for most students. That would be much more intense than the remote learning we did last year, and Mrs. Barker can come in and talk about that if you all have curricular questions. There are some students, and one of the speakers tonight mentioned students who are at a disadvantage. There are some students for which we receive special money to do things for them, to help them get caught up or not get further behind. And we've received some money, and we've been told by the state that we can serve these students if we're in a Plan B. So early in the year, while most students are doing some remote learning, pre-kindergarten, some small groups of elementary students who struggled academically before we had the COVID-19 crisis, and then some students with specialized plans would have some in-person options that they could select or not. And those are supported through specialized funding that comes to us for those particular students. And we've been encouraged to help them because they would be more likely to have fallen behind last year with what we had going on. As school begins, we think that before we make a full transition, that administrators and teachers and staff will need to work on several items. One is to conduct some specific transition activities. As you know, we did pretty well with the remote learning we did last year. It was more supplemental. This year, it would be more intentional. We think it would be really important this year, if we started with some remote, for our teachers and students to get to know each other. They have not been in class before, so we would begin with some transition activities for teachers and students to become acquainted. That would also, I think, be necessary for students who are transitioning from new schools into kindergarten, into middle school, into high school. We traditionally do those things. We think we need to do those things again, and that can be done under the hybrid plan that we're suggesting tonight. We also think that this is an unusual time, and none of us have really done this before. And so we will need some time for not only our students and our teachers, but really families and other people just to become familiar with all of the state rules around reopening. What does that social distancing thing mean, and how often am I checking in with students? We'd also need some time to make sure we put the appropriate safety precautions in place. We've ordered a lot of those things, and Dr. Putnam can talk about that. One of the big items, I think, on the list that we would need to do in this proposed hybrid plan is to determine the specific students and the specific employees that would be available for in-person instruction. We've done a general survey, and we know it's about half and half, and a lot of them really want us to open school, and they want that opportunity. They feel like they're entitled to that. And others really want remote, and we're required to provide that for folks who don't choose it. So we're trying to be very mindful of both of those groups. But certainly, to do a full transition to Plan B, we'll need to know exactly what everybody intends to do, and so that'll take a little bit of time to do that. And then, once we gather that information and we know the students and the families that say, yes, we definitely want to come, and we know who they are and their grade level and how many teachers we need and other support staff in the school system, all the staff, and we know the staff that we have, then I think we can put together a plan that would allow us to do, I think, what most people think is the traditional Plan B. So that's what we propose. The reopening process, we would certainly monitor and evaluate to determine if it's possible to return to in-person learning for interested students. And we would like to do that with a goal of to do that with the goal of having that first opportunity to do that on Monday, September the 21st. That's around a month. I've been looking at other districts across the state who are, who are selecting hybrid models or models sort of like the one that we're proposing, and their timeframes are in that range, not that we need to do what anyone else is doing, but that's, that seems to be a reasonable amount of time to see if, if things are going to change with COVID, and to see what our resources are like, and to see how many people truly intend to come and are available to work with students in person. So, that's what, that's what we propose. Remote learning will be available to all students who do not choose access in personal to in-person learning. I think that's important to restate. That has been a requirement from the state all along the way. If you just don't want to come, then there will be a, a remote learning option for you, and school systems will provide that. The school system will also continue to comply with laws, state laws, regulations, and orders. And not that we need to give a reference or anything, but this type of hybrid plan that is a little different than what most people think about C and B is authorized under Plan B, Option F, if you look at the big book from the state. The, this type of hybrid plan is authorized under Plan B, Option F of the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Guidebook for Reopening Public Schools. So, that in a nutshell is where we are today and what we would suggest or recommend. I know that you may still have lots of questions. This is an important decision, and you'll have some more discussions, so I'll try to take some questions, and certainly, if those are about safety or support services, we'll want to hear more from Dr. Putnam, and if those questions are about teaching and learning and curriculum, we want to hear more from Mrs. Barker.
Okay. Do you want to have questions?
I, I have copies too. I meant to give those to you. This is a, a brief outline.
So, Dr. Bill, you are recommending to go virtual learning for one month, September the 17th?
Yes, sir. There would be some groups, though, that we would want to do some in-person learning with. We receive some specific money from the state called jumpstart money to operate jumpstart programs. That money was, that came down under COVID provisions. It can only be spent to help students who were struggling academically before COVID hit last year, and so, we would like to, to provide some in-person learning for those folks. The details of that, Mrs. Barker can talk about. We also understand that operating pre-K, which is a program, as you all know, in most instances, for students who might have some lag or, or something that they need specifically to get ready for kindergarten, that we do that. That's not something we're sure we can do under Plan C. We can certainly do more investigation. And then, we also have some specific funding from the state for students who have specialized learning plans, IEPs, and that's not for all of them, and certainly, a lot of them would not want to, to access that option, but the money was provided to us for those groups, and we would like to offer some in-person opportunities for those groups. The state thinks they need it. They've given us some specific money for it, and then, we would, you know, certainly defer to our people who manage those areas to carry out the, the specific processes on, on conducting those, what I would call, early in-person opportunities before you get to a point that you're capable of doing it with everyone that might want to attend.
Well, I, I have one concern, so the money and the people that was falling behind, that is something that needs to be taken care of, if you can take care of it. But with this plan, you will be starting virtual learning for four weeks. Is that four weeks?
What's the first day? What's the start date? August what?
Well...
Do we know that yet?
We, we, we think it is very important to do some transition activities upfront, especially for young children. It will be very hard for kindergarten, first grade, second grade. It may be hard for high school students, too. It'll be really hard for those students to effectively learn remotely, and we don't want them to learn remotely any more than, any longer than necessary, when we can go to in-person safely, and we have the, the resources and the regulations allow it, and we can staff it. So, we, but we would start with a number of activities about meeting your teacher. Here is your new school. These are things that we do every year and don't think a lot about, because we're not in COVID. We think those activities are important, and we have heard from a number of specialists in the country, one namely, the American Pediatric Association, that has talked about those kinds of interactions for students, and so, we would certainly not want to overlook that in any plan that we did, that we entered into.
I meant the first opening day, the first day to even remote learning. What would that?
Didn't the governor say something about the 24th?
I noticed that 21st, some systems, I think, Harris County said 17th when they're starting. I didn't know if we have a date of August when we were going to start.
I think we would probably start in very intensive remote learning within, by the end of the first week. That would be intentional. I don't want to steal Mrs. Barker's thunder. We would need some time, maybe those school days before the 17th, to do training with teachers, that depending upon how quickly the training goes and the resources that we have in place, that might certainly linger into that first week. We have to get our people trained. But students who are returning to learning from, some of them for the first time, and some of them from the middle of last March, will need to know who we are and understand the, the signs and the little things that we put on the floor, and this is my teacher, and, and they'll have to, you all know how important relationships are in all matters, and they'll have to develop some relationships. So, I, I wouldn't say that the intensive remote instruction would begin on day one, but certainly, as we're into the second week, we would want to do that.
Sorry, Mr. Clark.
That's all right. I was just trying to get a pointer. I was trying to say that for a month, whatever day we start, you're saying September the 17th. I'm not really hearing an exact date of starting and an exact date of ending with remote learning. I was just going to say that for a month, we have students that does not have that reliable internet. They may also be having family issues. They've already been cooped up for four to five months, and just like Jill had said, and I think the number's higher than 20% that does not have reliable internet in the county. Now, obviously, I know that even if we went strictly Plan B, you're still going to have remote learning, ever how you set it up, if we went to Plan B. But right now, you're saying to transition into Plan B, but for a month, we're going to have some students that's going to be falling behind, because they're remote learning at either the high school level or the junior high level, or the middle school level, sorry, you failed, I went to the junior high, or the elementary level. Are they any talk, or have anybody thought about as a school district, Haywood County, to just push our start date back? Our start date, when I say our start date, I ain't saying look at LEAs, and I'm not saying what the governor's plan is, but right now, it's not feasible for Plan B to work, because logistically, it's a nightmare. And you've already, Dr. Bill, or Doc, Dr. Trevor, and Jill's already said that. Plan C is a nightmare, because we are not giving every student in Haywood County the education that they're supposed to have. We, I ain't going to put we. Myself, when I was elected to this board, was to give every kid in Haywood County the best education they can. Now, this COVID-19, we know that it, it, it's been messed up everything. It has. Plan B would at least give everybody an option to keep, bring their kids to school, let their kids stay at the home, and do the remote learning. But now that your plan, you're still taking one month out of some kids that, that could be learning in school for two weeks and online for two weeks. We're taking away that face-to-face time that we, as a school system, should be giving kids that are going to have a hard time doing the online learning.
Now, I, I understand that the, the two or three points there, and if I don't cover them all, please come back to them. First of all, the first day of school, by state law, is August 17th. We have some flexibility under Plan B to do that pretty creatively, particularly the Option F that we looked at and we're referencing. The, the one problem or concern, significant problem or concern that we have with going straight into Plan B is, we have done a survey of employees and parents and teachers and other people, but it's a survey, and that does not guarantee that all the teachers and teacher assistants and bus drivers and custodians and everyone else, all the employee groups, will actually come or be able to come. Some of them, we suspect, will have medical excuses and exemptions, and it will take us some time, if it's, especially if it's a specialized teacher, a high school teacher with a license in one area, it will take us some time after we figure out who, who wants to come and who's willing to come and work in Plan B. It'll take us a little bit of time to make sure we have students who are there for in-person learning covered. And we, you know, so that, that is a primary concern. There are other concerns, too, about making sure that everybody understands what they're supposed to do. Had lots of conversations with local staff and other people in the region about, you know, are people going to understand the social distancing rules when they first get there? I think if we start with some remote learning, part of that can be on, on protocols and procedures, and when we start face-to-face, these are the things that we are going to have to do to be safe and, and to learn effectively. So, I just don't know, having been out of face-to-face or in-person instruction since last March, if we can do that immediately. I do hope, as well as a lot of people who entered the surveys, I'd say about half of them, that the people who want in-person instruction can get that as soon as we get everything ready and in place. We, we would like to be able to do that, and I put in the plan, the date of September the 21st, and we'll just have to look at it and see, can we do it? You know, what is the situation like? Have we received additional state mandates or rules or regulations? Do we have the staff that we need? How many students are coming? You know, can we put them at the elementary level in, in two rooms instead of three rooms, because some are staying home, and another teacher can do the remote instruction for the ones that want to stay home? And what do we, we'll have to look at middle school and high school, and when we have people with a specific instructional area, a license that is maybe just in art or just in chemistry, and they can't come, and there aren't many of those people at the particular school, we'll have to know that, and then make sure that we find a way to provide the in-face instruction in an effective way for those, those students. I think the other thing about Plan B is, students will be off on some kind of rotational basis, they will be off of in-person, so we'll need to be very intentional about that. I think the in-person instruction that we plan to offer this year is so much more intense that it wouldn't be as good as face-to-face, but it will be a lot more intensive, and Mrs. Barker can talk about that. I don't know if I got every point or not, but trying to remember all of those.
Yes, the only other thing I was saying was, and I guess this is a personal statement, instead of asking you a question is, is the thing about, well, I guess this would be a question, why could we not, as a school system, not start school until later instead of August or whatever? And I know that the governor has rules, and I know this one has rules, and that one has rules, and, but I still don't understand why we, as a school system, cannot make our own decision about our start date, when this has been an unusual year, and if we're talking about going, trying to phase in September the 21st, why don't we do the teachers from August 17th to the 21st, do the training, do everything else, unless don't start talking about even doing anything with the kids till September 21st?
Yeah. Well, there's a couple of reasons for that, and again, Dr. Putnam and Mrs. Barker might be able to add to that. First of all, I agree with you. I think we should be able to start when we want to locally, and we have argued that, probably you and I together at times, over weather and all kinds of other things, and that flexibility has not been given to us by the State General Assembly. The other reason for delaying the start is, they do ask us for 1,025 contact hours or 185 days, and so, if we really said we weren't starting until this particular date, they would require us as much as they could to, to continue to try to get all of those hours, and they also put an end date on us. So, they're going to really try to cram all of those hours from, if we didn't start until September 21st to the end. They try to cram all of that in, but they're going to make a stop in the middle of June. So, that, that's just a legislative issue. I think the other reason for starting with remote is, during that timeframe, students will get instruction. It won't be, in my opinion, as good as face-to-face or what the state likes to call in-person. It will not be as good, but I can assure you, it will be more intense and more intentional than it was last year, and you all heard Mrs. Barker talk about that at the work session, and she can give you a lot more details about, again, I don't want to speak for her, y'all can call her in here, too, but she can give you a lot more details about intentional, daily teacher-to-student contact in individual classes and courses and all the things that go along with that.
Mr. Dr. Naughton, and Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I, I'd like to make a couple of comments. One is, you know, for, for, for all of us, student safety is of the utmost importance, and I think in our conversation with Dr. Jaben, who was very insightful and very helpful, he helped us to understand that given the current, I'm not a doctor, so if I say something that isn't just exactly right, but the transmission rate, I think is the way he called it, at, at the current level of two to three... but the transmission rate, I think is the way he called it, at, at the current level of two to three percent in Haywood County. He, he told me in a personal conversation that, uh, the transmission rate that you're really looking for to reopen is somewhere around five to seven percent. And we're, we're well underneath that at two to three percent in the county, uh, which makes it about as safe as you can get to, to begin to move forward and transition. And, and I think that's important to make that statement because he, he made another comment that has stuck with me and, uh, and I think not just for our sake, but for all of those that are listening, we need to bring, as he said, the family unit into the decision-making process. And, and I hope that the families that are listening right now, trying to make a decision about the school year coming up, uh, will understand that, uh, according to the public health folks, this is a good time to, to be looking at it, uh, in, in transition. But i- it's also a time where they need to take the data themselves and make a decision for what's best for their family and for their child. And they have two options. They can, they can choose to go remote learning or as we transition into Plan B, they can transition into Plan B as well. Those options are both still available. And I make that just as, as a very blunt statement so that everybody, uh, really understands. They can decide what's best for their child and what's the best si- situation for their household, uh, if there's people with underlying health conditions. The, the other statement that I'd like to make is this, this idea of transitioning to Plan B over a period of weeks, I think is, is smart for a couple of reasons. One, it gets our teachers back in the school building and doing the things in a new way, using new technologies and, and, and even some new curriculums as we move forward with this thing. So they gain some understanding, but they're also allowing us, as we do that, as we bring that group in, it lets us test our system or we, if we got our bases covered.
Yeah.
But it also allows us to, uh, to engage the intelligence of our teachers as we continue to build out this transition plan. Uh, they, they're gonna know, a second grade teacher is gonna know what, uh, what works in second grade classrooms, uh, by far better than I do. So we're gonna get some collaborative work as we begin to build that plan out as well. We're testing the system, we're collaborating, we're putting their best minds together to, to build this thing out to a real in-person learning opportunity. And I, I think that is, um, that's very, um, important for us to understand what the transition time does for us. There's, there's advantages to that. Um, the, the other thing is that I'd like to say is, and I, I, I don't ever like to speak on behalf of the whole board, but a- after being with you all as long as we've been together on this board, I think we could all agree that our, our children deserve our very best. And a transition into this plan ensures that we give them the very best opportunity uh, to walk into something that will be successful versus just trying to turn on a switch. That's a little scary to me because they've, they got their world shook in March. So when, when we move them back, they, they have got to know we're gonna be able to deliver something consistent and, 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 and something stable a- as we move forward. And I think the transition allows us to be able to, to, to do that. The one thing that Stephen mentioned that, that I do think is very important and, and I'm sure one of you guys are gonna address this, but, uh, if there, if there are students that live in areas where there, there is no internet access, surely we'll have packets of information that will be delivered or picked up so that those students that don't have that same access will be moving at the same rate. And then there'll be telecommunications that, that'll help aid that along. My biggest concern is, you know, as we move through the transition, it also helps us understand what our staffing needs are gonna be. And we're able to, to try to be in front of that at all times before we get students in there and then find a big hiccup.
Again, you can, uh, we can have Dr. Putnam come in and talk about access, uh, but I will tell you that, uh, we're gonna have like fifty Wi-Fi spots around the community where people can get to them. I got an email, uh, from, uh, the Haywood County Fairgrounds today, uh, telling us that they would like to be added to our list of places where people can go. Uh, we will have some thumb drives certainly for students who, uh, can't always, um, get access at their house. We ordered, and Dr. Putnam knows the specific number, he and, uh, Kim Guffey Jackson, over two hundred, uh, MiFi spots with COVID money. And there are places where those don't work, absolutely, and we'll have to make a special effort. But there are a number of things that, uh, Dr. Putnam and the support services people have worked on to mitigate that problem. That is a problem that we will not completely eliminate. But, but we do have a number of things in place that we think will help.
Can, can we also, and, and, and I hate to just think out loud sometimes, uh, in front of people, but you, you know, you, you like to process. But, you know, I, I think of the Fines Creek community. They have public Wi-Fi at the library down there. Can we work with them? Try to increase the bandwidth so that
You've already got a group down there right now that is working on through the Fines Creek Community Center, the fire department. They've had meetings and they're already, they have asked, I gotta call today on that one. They want, there's about two hundred yards to get our friends from AT&amp;T to run a line. They're going to purchase the routers. They're gonna also have some, they've already taught some retired teachers and they want to have, and they said they would even over the whole fire department to have maybe certain kids come in, high-risk kids that academically needs a little assistance, personal assistance, one-on-one. Uh, they said, you know, they're trying to, they're wanting to help our, our citizens and our schoolchildren as well. And so that's the thing right now, they're working on that right now. And we're, I know Mr. Kirkpatrick, I know we, we've gotta get with Ms. Ms. Jackson and, and working seeing, you know, whoever we can get from AT&amp;T. And if it's COVID money, what does it take to run that line two hundred yards? So they'll have that internet service as another hotspot, as another area. So we've got so many citizens in this community, in these community centers in our county as well that they want us to be successful too. They want these children in this county to be successful.
Well, and that's
So that's why they're looking at that, yeah.
That, that we have, um, fortunately, we're, we're surrounded by great people in the communities.
We are.
And, um, who would be willing to partner in any way possible to make sure that, that the children in Haywood County is gonna be successful. So I think we have to look at those and I'm sure you guys, I know you guys well enough to know that you're already beginning to look at that. But, you know, even if we have resources that are available that could be shared, that can expand, that can move things around. Because, you know, in the, in the future, uh, we're gonna have some remote learning days that are built into the schedule by mandate of, um, DPI or the State Board of Education. So we, we've gotta be able to do that anyway. If we can, if we can do these things now and, and work with, find out who, who are the partners we may not even know about, like, like Skyrunner, which is, which doesn't require a line. You know, it's just towers that are set up in different places. I don't know enough to talk about it intelligently, so I'll stop at that. But I believe there's other opportunities that we can, we can do these things to help our children be successful. And I know without a shadow of a doubt that, that, that the citizens of Haywood County are gonna jump on board with helping, uh, the children in, in any way they can, so. We just gotta give them the best that we've got.
Dr. Rogers says good and I wanna piggyback on this one, I like this ride. You know, that, that's one thing, of course, my light switch, uh, I'm hoping my lights will turn on just a little bit faster. Transition time's good. I'd like, you know, I, and I, I'm, I'm looking at on some of these higher-risk children that are academically, uh, don't have internet service or really need some of that in-classroom things. I, I'm hoping that we could maybe move some of this instead of just that certain group, the pre-cans, the small, maybe even some high school kids or some, some certain middle school ages or some elementary groups that teachers saying, oh, I want to be here, I want some kids in my classroom. And I know that's still, that's part of this Plan B, like I say, it's a total, okay, how do we transport them? How do we feed them? Who's gonna be there, who's not gonna be there? And that's why I do like the transition, the hybrid plan two as well. It's just, uh, you know, I was really wanting to get that light switch turned on a little faster, but it, but it's a, it's a good idea and it's a good thought. Yeah, let's, let's move into it because like you say, we want, we want our teachers to be successful as well as we know they have been and we want them to continue to be. And we wanna keep those teachers on our staff. We don't wanna lose any, any teachers due to this, this crisis as well. And, and I'm, like I say, I was hoping maybe we could have some more children involved in this initial kinda phasing into some in-classroom work and, or maybe some kind of group. Like you say, a machine shop, ha- it's kinda hard to do some of your trade schools remote. It's very hard to do trade schools remote. You can't work on a car on the internet too well. I mean, you can and it's gonna probably buzz you when you get mad, you know, like the old doctor making the bones out, you know, the old gang. You know, you'll get buzzed once in a while, but, uh, you know, we just, like I say, we, we don't want our kids to be lacking and, and that, that is our true goal. And I know that's the true goal of our administration as well, so.
We, we were very excited, uh, when we looked at the survey results that the group that was most interested in returning, and I know Mrs. Barker talked to you about that, but the group that was most interested in returning was the students.
Yes.
Now, when we got to parents and teachers and other categories, not as high, but we were very excited about that. And we really do, um, want students, uh, in families who want to return to in-person in, in instruction to have that option, but we also want to make sure that we are ready. Uh, and I hope that we will be ready on the 21st and that will be our goal. And then certainly, um, if for some reason we're not, then we'll do it as soon after that as possible. But our goal would be the 21st. Uh, and we'll just have to see if we have the staff and the resources and the capability to make that happen. Also about involving, uh, other groups in this initial plan of some, a group before, what people would typically think of as the traditional Plan B. We've had some questions about that, uh, from our secondary schools. And so I, I can just tell you that we've had those questions and we will explore those and, uh, think about the money and resources that we need to make that happen and if it can be done, um, safely. So that, I don't wanna commit to that because that's a new question. That's a brand-new question, but we, we've had that conversation recently.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanna ask one more question about the online learning. If for the month, or even when B goes, I know B's gonna be a little bit different situation, but for this month, you're going to have a Tuscola class that has twenty-five students in history, let's just say history, let's just take a group of twenty-five students learning on class. Teacher's putting it on there, it's gonna be right down to the T, A, B grade. Now, all them twenty-five students, let's say that all twenty-five has a question.
Let me get Mrs., let me don't steal her thunder, I know the answer, let me not steal her thunder. I know the answer to that, but let me, and I'll stay in the room because I count eight.
Yeah, we're, we're fine.
Yeah, I count eight and she can come in and make ten. Let me let her address that and then we may have some things for Dr. Putnam where he would need to do that too.
Hey, yeah, to answer your question, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
I hadn't really finished the
I'm sorry.
Total question.
Ask me again.
Okay. Are we expecting the teachers who work above and beyond and what? I know I've been in this school system long enough on this board that I know we've got great teachers. We've got great administrators, we've got great, everybody in the Haywood County Consolidated School System. I know that. But are we going to be expecting those teachers instead of being, working from seven to four, where they're used to, or seven to five in class? Well, are we expecting them teachers to be answering phone calls at nine o'clock at night on the day that they've taught that course or have they posted on that course online? Are we going to be expecting that?
Their ti- their, basically their typical day is from eight until three-thirty. We will, in our remote learning plan this year that had to be submitted to the state, we did put in there the idea and the requirement of flexible hours because we know one of the pieces on our survey that came back were parents that were working at night, they couldn't get to the teacher or call them. And the majority of our teachers, and, and I just wanna tell them again, they worked very hard in a very stressful situation. Y'all need to be proud of them. I know it wasn't perfect, but I know teachers that put in, were putting in twelve and fourteen-hour days and doing reading groups and things like that too. But with that being said, um, there is a provision, we know we're gonna have to have some office hours. We know we're gonna have to have some helplines where, um, they have places to contact parents when, after hours. And we could flex some of the schedules, um, Mr. Kirkpatrick, but the expectation of the teachers, and, and again, you're hearing this first because I'm meeting with principals in the morning, but this is not an emergency anymore. The staff will not be at home, staff will be at school. So therefore, um, when you think about a high school schedule, those sca- they, they need to run that schedule. That doesn't mean a child needs to be in biology for ninety minutes, but that biology teacher for the first part needs to offer direct instruction in Google Meet. Then there can be some follow-up and things like that. For the remote learning kids, which has been the heart of this, it's a, it's a problem in all the plans. Um, we are gonna require teachers to have those plans and videos on Thursday the week before. So students can get that, they could download those, they have that material prior to the week that they're being served. So does that help answer your question? So I think those are all the things that we learned that we need to improve on. And again, um, you know, that attendance will be taken. So if you, um, if you have first period biology, you gotta Google Meet first period. There needs to be that interaction with that teacher and that relationship built and that touch to them every single day, because these kids are coming back in five weeks, we hope. So, um, that is very, very important and that's gonna be a change. Because before it was like, it was a lot of grace and a lot of generosity in a really unsettling times. And so we're trying to accommodate people and, and illnesses and different parts of that. This time it's school, it's a school day, so.
Well, you brought up another good. You brought up something else that, okay, you're saying Google Meet. Now what if you have that one person or that two people or three people or five people, students that don't have that reliable internet? How are you gonna count on, how are you gonna count them attendance at school, uh, on that day?
Because we, it automatically, um, our attendance system defaults to present. If that teacher, that student can still, will have to have the work presented, that teacher can still make a phone call. Are you okay? Are you here? Did you get your assignments done? You can email them, um, so some, or you can't email, but you could call them. And that's what a lot of our people, they did. Um, I don't think it's gonna be perfect, Mr. Kirkpatrick. There's no, we had social workers that were taking work and bringing work back. But I do think we're more equipped for that this time. And I do think our people, our principals, and I'm talking, and they can hear me out there, I do think they know who our students are now. Like, I was just thinking like, at a high school, they may not know the ninth graders who don't have, but they will know within the but they will know within the first several days, because those teachers will be able to say, this person hadn't reached out. We gotta go track this person down. And they'll know the ones from the year before now, and they will make provisions for that. And so the problem with the Google Chrome, with Chromebooks is, if you don't have access and you just go in a parking lot, you can't download the videos. So what has to happen, the teachers will have to prepare some of those videos the week before of their direct instruction. It'll have to be saved on a jump drive, and then that jump drive will have to be sent home with the kid, the student. So they can put that in, and then they can watch the video. It's not gonna be perfect, but also, under every other week or every other three weeks models, if you go every three weeks, then you're getting in-person instruction two weeks. The other weeks, the student is at home, you know, also, so that poses a problem for all students, too. So it is a very difficult situation, but we are trying to work through those issues. Ask me anything else. Instruction.
Ms. Barker.
Yes, sir.
You just brought up how in-person instruction will work. As we think about this tonight, we're not, I don't think we can prove or do anything like that on that level of detail, because we don't know how many teachers are gonna be there. We don't know how many students. We don't know what it's gonna look like. We don't know if it's gonna have to be every two days, every other week. You know, we don't know that yet until we can get our hands around it, and we'll get our hands around it by going through this transition process to find out. So, and I wanna reiterate something you said, because I don't think it gets said enough sometimes. We have an incredible school system, but it's for a reason. It's because we have incredible teachers and staff and parents and students that have made this system what it is. As a matter of fact, you know, I would hate to be anywhere else other than Haywood County trying to pull off what we're talking about, because I know this community will rally around our efforts and try to do something great.
Sure.
To provide for these children, so. Thank you, because I know you've had to put a lot of work into this whole curriculum thing. And, you know, I'm like Stephen. I always worry about that student that doesn't have the same advantages to people that live in areas where there's internet. And, but I'm confident, we'll figure out how to educate that student.
And I agree with you, and I, you know, just to shout out from March until May, again, they did extraordinary work in a really, really, really stressful situation. And that's just not our teachers. That was all of our employees, and we want them to feel better about and good about coming back. We want to prepare our people, our parents and our students. It's split. You know, my child filled out her survey. She's going back to school. I'm a parent. I may feel totally different about that. But we have to try to honor this and try to get through this with the goal of, Dr. Rogers, what you said, getting all of our kids back in the building. So that's where we want them, and I think we can do it, and I think, you know, being cautious and being thorough. And Dr. Bill taught me a long time ago, just to try to plan that and make some good decisions for our kids. We love them, and we want them back safely.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on the remote learning piece for those kids and families that want to do strictly remote learning, you know, the support and the help that we're gonna be able to give them?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, and it depends. So let me try to capture this and explain it. If we start out completely remote for those first five weeks, you understand that will be what I just went through. Everybody, you know, we'll pass out Chromebooks a week before school starts. We will have everyone access their classes on a certain time, and we will provide information and flash drives for the kids that don't have access. Okay, we, yes, we are gonna buy iPads for all of our K-1 students, too. Ms. Jackson has found a grant, so we should have those by the start of school. They use a different platform called Seesaw they're going to use next year instead of Google. But, so I think what is very important to clarify is, under Plan B, when we move to a Plan B, there's a chance we could transition to a Plan A. The governor could totally change their orders. We don't know that. But under a Plan B, which is a, which would be a hybrid week, or daily, or whatever we could staff, Dr. Rogers, then at that time, what would happen is, let's say, your daughter, Caitlin, she would come to school one week. The next week, she would be at home. Her instruction would be front-loaded that week. So it would be a lot of teaching, a lot of power standards, hitting the very important pieces, the really difficult material. Then the next week, there would be some videos that she could go back and reference. There would be office hours where she could call and communicate with the teacher, or if you needed to be, and they would be supported that way. But I think it's really important for people to remember, that's another kind of a, not a good thing in our Plan B, is that second week.
They don't have.
They don't have that, because then her teacher will be teaching the second half of the kids.
You're saying second week, Dick.
Yeah, but.
It could go three.
If it goes three weeks and they're in-person one week.
Three groups.
Yeah, and that is heavily dependent on a lot of transportation, because if we went every other week, which is better, could we get the students there in a timely manner? Or do we have to run the buses on certain routes two and three times a morning? You know, Dr. Putnam can speak to that. So that's a whole nother piece. But I think people need to understand, and in Plan C, all remote, very difficult for the people who don't have access. For the people that do, they're having their teacher every day. And when we move to a Plan B, they're gonna have them that week. Then the following week, that teacher will be teaching the other half. And to ask our teachers to do all that is gonna be really, really difficult. Now, we may have some staff that chooses to work remotely during Plan B, which is what we need to see, or telework. And then we can maybe combine those teachers and offer something those weeks. But those are some, those are some things, until we see who's really, you know, where the staffing is gonna be, we can't make those decisions yet. Does that make sense?
So really, the students that choose to go all virtual and then don't wanna come back in, they may have a little bit more support on that virtual side if they're getting the same teachers all the time, then.
Well.
Maybe, or is that, how is that?
Well, if they go, if we move into a Plan B, then the teacher that's in there, that biology teacher that's in there will be teaching the teachers that are face-to-face. The people that remain virtual, hopefully, we would be able to pull some of our teachers with some resources.
What if we go outside, do the outside contracts?
We could provide some resources through an outside contractor to get a teacher, and the platform is beyond our, just.
It's just gonna be.
It's a lot of money, yes, that we just don't have. I mean, we can get the resources, which are great, but we think that we could, with the amount of students, if 50% don't come back, we hope we could pull some of these teachers together, and, you know, they could support that remote learning for the parents that wanna stay on remote learning all year. That's the best for the kids.
Right.
So we're hoping.
We'll make sure there's that support out there for the parents, you know, either way that we go.
But for, I do wanna clarify one thing you said, and Dr. Nolte and I had this conversation. He may not remember, but we want that to be equitable. So if we choose when the kids come back for the one week, and then they're off the week, we want them, and then the kids that are choose all remote, we want an equitable services there. So we'll need to work through that, too, as best we can.
Okay, thank you.
You said earlier, we're not under an emergency situation. All teachers have to be at school?
I think with Dr. Bill, I'm not the superintendent, but I think what Dr. Bill has, I think, under Plan B, option F, staff can come into the building. They can be at school. When we were under emergency, that was a stay-at-home order. Everyone had to stay at home.
Well, that's, I guess my question is, are we requiring all teachers under that plan to be at school?
We will get the final, hopefully the final, rules on that Monday. Mr. Hines is attending a meeting about that. It is our understanding at this point, especially under a transitional Plan B, that teachers could come into the building, and we would want them to do that and would ask them to do that unless they have appropriate documentation that says that they should not. We think that they'll be able to do a better job. We hope that it would make some of them more comfortable with being in the building with other people if they saw that we were really doing a good job with safety and cleaning and social distancing. So we would want as many adults in the building as we could. Now, the specific guidelines on that, we hope to get Monday. And then we will certainly tell everyone about those guidelines when we get those.
I was gonna say, that'd be very important, that we make sure that we communicate the findings of that information for all the board members, and especially the employees. That's the ones that count.
See, we also had a situation back last year, well, I mean, after March, that there were several teachers. They didn't have internet service at their houses either, so they had to go to the school to get anything done. I mean, it was.
And some of them wanted to.
An emergency situation, yeah, they had to, and I know it was allowed, but because they did what they had to do. They were resilient, like you say.
Yes, Mr. Rogers. Some of them wanted to go, and some of them, it took us a little while, because it was a crisis emergency. We had just been thrown into it, for lack of a better word. Now, we have studied it a long time, and we have more rules and regulations probably than we want, but at least we have most of them. And I'm sure some of them may change, but I would hope that they would not change much more. Now, it's a matter of just finding out who's gonna be here. How many teachers in that department, or at that grade level, or with that particular licensure? And then all the other things that we've suggested in the hybrid transitional plan, the, all the things about safety, and again, I think it's appropriate to ask Dr. Putnam to come in, too, if you have questions about that, because he's done a lot of work on that. But just making sure all of that stuff is in place, so the people who want to have instruction in person, try to use the state's terminology, can.
And you know, you bring up a point that we can discuss some other things that are important for families to know. One of those is, we face, and I'm trying to be real kind when I say this, an ever-changing mandate from the governor's office. It can change from day to day. We've experienced that this week. But we can't violate the mandate, whether we like it or not. We can't violate that mandate. And there's some things that is beyond this local board's control. We can't, we can't change social distancing rules. What's set by the state is set by the state. We can't change whether or not they wear masks. You know, I've gotten emails about, please don't make them wear, we can't change that. That's beyond our ability to touch or remove. We have to follow the rules that are set before us. So just, people need to understand that as they make their decisions for their family units. There's some things that we can't, and I think that's why it's good to communicate as much as possible with the communities like we are tonight remotely, and even use, Dr. Jabe and our Health and Human Services guy, doctor, to make sure that we're keeping updated information out in front of people so they can make good decisions. Thank you.
Along that line as well, if you missed the work session I'm talking about to the public, that will be posted up on our YouTube channel whenever we get through closed captioning that. We can't post it till it's closed caption. That's the reason it takes time to get it out. I know a lot of people are fussing, or are concerned that we didn't have it up, but, you know, again, we had to follow the rules and regulations, but we'll get these, all these meetings up as soon as we can. And our staff does a tremendous job. I don't know how they get it turned around as fast as they do, as much as we all say. But anyway, I know you wanna transition over to Dr. Putnam now, so.
I'd like to give him an opportunity to answer your questions.
I do have one more question, and I think in our work session that Mr. Francis was referring to, I think Mr. Burnett had a very good point, or excellent point during that meeting about our capabilities of, I know right now we may not be able to, but as a teacher is teaching that class, maybe to be able to broadcast it out to those kids that are at home, that are doing the remote learning, that can't be there because of the numbers. You know, what do we need to do to outfit our internal system to be able to maybe do that? Not, maybe not this semester, but maybe next semester or something like that?
Again, Dr. Putnam can talk about that, or we can research that with Kim. We do think, and this is, we do think that there is a capability for effective short periods of co-mingling, for lack of a better term, in this world of social distancing. The first 15 or 20 minutes of an in-person class with other students in the class at home, in particular, who are doing Plan B, and they're coming on a cycle, for them to join in a Google Meet. We don't think that that would be very effective for an hour or longer. But we have talked to some of our friends in a neighboring school system who plan to do some of that. I won't name them, because that may or may not be something that they end up doing. But we do think it might be possible in some situations, when that middle-school math teacher or high-school English teacher, or art, or whatever the class is, has a nine o'clock class start, we think it might be possible, if people have the internet access, which all won't, or that they could log in and get that first 20 minutes of direct instruction. Now, again, universal? Perfect? No. But again, it's a place for us to get better and work with other people.
Well, if there's things that we need to do internally about, you know, upfitting our wiring capability broadcasting, you know, I'd like for us to look into that, see what we need to do.
I think that's been brought up before, too, because I agree with that, too. That's another thing I thought, okay, you've got 25 children in a class, say biology, or, well, let's say, English class. You've got 10 of them that are remote. You've got 15 in the classroom at that time. And we've seen churches do it and all this stuff, and they, live streaming. Somehow, you know, I know we've got some capabilities. Like I say, it can't be broad, all everything, because there's no way we could do it all, but there may be some opportunities that we'd be able, some classes, we could do live streaming. So some of us could be remote, some of us could be in the classroom, and still, and then, like you say, the interactive part of it, to be able to ask questions, that may have to be through a chat.
Well, Google Meet would allow that.
Meet would do it like that, but, yeah, and you've got the cameras, and it was kinda funny, just, you know, like you say, it's still uncharted territory, but that's something that would also give them that opportunity to be participating.
To some point, we're done it. Mr. Clark's listening to us now.
Yeah, we're doing this, but.
He can't see us, but he's in the meeting.
I think he can see us.
Yeah, before I turn it over to Dr. Putnam.
I can see you.
Before I turn it over to Dr. Putnam, and please don't take this the right way, but as someone who is highly qualified in biology, we are not trying to teach him the Krebs cycle, okay? So it is gonna really help if we can get him in front of us as much as we can, as soon as we can do that safely and with staffing and all those, and following all the rules.
Well, Dr. Nolte, I'm telling you, it's my prayer. We don't become experts at doing this. We get back to.
Normal.
Normal.
We want Plan, we want Plan A and then no Plan.
That's right, no Plans to go.
Whenever we can have either of those.
I don't have anything. I just came in in case you had questions.
I have a question as far as, I was asked this, about are we gonna continue to do the meals like we did in the spring, starting first day of school? Are we gonna try to do that, or what's gonna be the plan of that?
Well, we've planned.
Well, we've planned for a remote model and an in-person model. And so, if we did an in-person model where it rotates every other week, on the week that they're in-person with the teacher, they'll obviously get their meal there, while operating or maintaining a distribution for those that couldn't, that it's not their week. So, provided that we receive the same funding and the same allowances through the state that we, we fully intend to serve meals as readily as possible.
Now, we won't be able to deliver meals like we were doing, because those people, the teachers assistants and people that were delivering the meals are now gonna be needed in classrooms. So, we talked about, is that, is that a possibility, or are we just gonna have it available for them to come pick up?
Right now, it's distribution only, because our, you know, our staff would be, their attention, as you correctly pointed out, is devoted to either remote instruction or the distribution of meals for those, those kids who are, it's their week for in-person. I want them to reach that point. There is a short period there during the remote. If we can get allowance to distribute with our buses and we have enough staff, we certainly will. So, again, just another reason for a transitional period, because we've gotta test our systems. I've heard you talk about technology. I've heard you talk about using Google Meet. We've really gotta be able to test those systems, and we don't wanna be doing that while we have kids in front of us. We want them to have a quality session with their teacher once they reach that point.
Well, you, you brought up buses, and for me, the transportation issue is paramount. And what, what is the current guidance on buses in regards to social distancing?
You correctly said the most current guidance. The most current guidance is one child, every seat, all the way up next to the window, both sides.
Per row of seats.
Per row of seats. And so, bus capacities are figured on three students per seat. And so, most of our capacities are at sixty-six. So, if you take and place one child for every seat that's on the bus, then that takes your capacity to twenty-two. So, roughly one-third of our current capacity. And so, again, my cautionary statement would be, I know we all want to be in-person, but we really, at that point, have to look at, how much are we gonna eat into the instructional time that we'd like for them to have with that teacher? If we had to go and if we looked at a A, B, C week, A group, B group, C group, because that's the capacity of our buses, then you're looking at one week in-person with the teacher and two weeks out of person, remote, at home. So, you know, as Dr. Nolte and Ms. Barker and others have pointed out, you know, I know that's the goal, and that's certainly our goal, but limitations like that handed down from the governor's office or from the state, really impact our ability to provide a, a quality setting. Because, you know, if you look at an A, A week, B week situation, then at that point, you're gonna have to make two runs on many of your buses. Our kids are gonna have to be getting up earlier, so that they can be dropped off earlier, so that route can then go and join some of our longer routes and help pick up kids along those routes, or make two runs. So, it becomes very convoluted at that time.
Well, and, and one of the reasons I, I asked that question was, you know, I've had several parents that have said, you know, as parents, what do we do? What can we do to make things the best for our kids? How do we, how can we get our kids back in school as normal as possible, given everything that we face? And transportation is one of those key places that can be a real limiting factor, and that's a great way for parents to help. I mean, it's, maybe ain't, ain't the popular thing to say, but it is a great way to help. If we're not running two buses, keeping kids on a bus for hours at a time, we, we don't wanna do that. So, parents, you can help.
Okay. And my observation would be also, if you have fifty percent, for instance, that says they're gonna do remote learning, and only fifty percent's taking in-class instruction, then you could probably go to every other week, due to the fact that you're only doing fifty percent of fifty percent.
Right.
If, if that makes sense.
It does.
Yes. And that, again, your, your great statement, that's, that's basically why you need a transition plan, just to see how many you're actually gonna have. Gives you time to test the, test the, your processes and your staffing.
What about the situations where parents may choose remote learning to begin with, and then we go, if we phase into Plan B, it's going great, everybody's, you know, it's just clicking along, and all of a sudden, the parents say, hey, I wanna transition my child from remote learning into Plan B or into in-person. How, what's, you know, explain that process to us.
And we haven't got that far into the weeds with it, if you will. Simply because, you know, it's hard to focus all your efforts on two separate plans. But in, in moving forward, we will certainly flesh that out. What I can tell you is, there can't be a great deal of, you know, changing in and out of plans, because you devote staffing to, to perform one part of it, and staff to perform another part of it. And large shifts in numbers in virtual, remote versus in-person, you know, our staffing may be limited anyway.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Putnam, or?
I'd just say, I think that's easier if we ever come to Plan A.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Thank you. You want me to just hang around, 'cause the next item is me?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, are we gonna finish this item here?
Oh, yeah.
Well, one of the things that, yeah, I hate to put people on the spot. Well, I really don't mind. But, Dr. Nolte, I, I think it would, it would help me to hear what your recommendation is, specifically, for us to think about as we're, we're, we're in this decision-making process.
Well, my recommendation is essentially the newest proposal that I brought to you when I first came out. It would be to use the regulations from the state under Option F of Plan B to enter into a hybrid transition plan. There, that is the plan, in my opinion, with the most flexibility, looking at B or C. That, that particular section, or Option F, literally starts with language-like, and you'd have to look it up to read the exact language, but language-like, you can basically use any of the things that are allowed in Plan B from all of the options. It allows us to do some of the pre-K things and the pre-loading things. Have more people on campus gives us time to test our processes, gives us time to see what other regulations come. And so, that would be my recommendation, that we enter into the plan that I described, and certainly if that's one, whichever one you all vote on, we will, we will put that in a press release and send it out, and then we will have lots of subsequent meetings with principals and teachers and share information. And again, I would hope that the plan goal would be able to transition to what, what most folks thinks is the traditional Plan B by the twenty-first of September. That would be contingent on a lot of things, but that would be our goal, and we would want for it to happen on that day, if it were possible. And we've talked for quite some time now about all of the things that we do not control, and all of the things that we would have to have in place that are really, really working in terms of safety precautions and staffing. But that would be my recommendation.
I have one more question for you. As far as, you know, transitioning into Plan B, and we're supposed to be at fifty percent capacity. Now, is that based on the, the number of students that could attend that school, or is that just number of students that have registered or signed up for the schools? Like, in other words, like over here at Central Haywood High School, you know, you have very small classes, may have six to ten to twelve kids in a classroom. Could all of those kids be there, or are you gonna have to say, well, you know, we only have twelve to begin with, so we gotta cut it, you know, in half, so only six can come at a time? Or could we have everybody come?
And Dr. Putnam can talk to this too. But the, the heart of the regulation is the required social distancing of six feet of space and a mask. And so, on average, and Dr. Putnam, you wanna talk about going in the rooms and looking, but on average, that's gonna be about half of our enrollment. The real measure is, we have to have the social distancing.
So, it is either or, one of those measure, but is how it originally came out, but what the governor has most recently clarified. It is protective covering required, cloth, mask, face covering, and six feet of, of social distance at all times. So, to get to your question, if we were looking at scheduling students for, for a particular school, it is fifty percent of their ADM.
Fifty percent of their ADM, okay.
And we, you know, we trust principals to, to use that in, in assigning kids to classes, so, so that they can distribute them through evenly and throughout the building. Does that mean it's perfectly half of the class? Well, in a PE class, maybe not, because it's a larger space, which means you can create six feet of distance between them in the gymnasium versus a regular classroom. So, but that's what it would be, fifty percent of the ADM.
What about classrooms that are smaller, and you may not be able to separate the desks six feet, and you may, you may have irregularly hold twenty-eight kids, but because it's a smaller classroom, you may only be able to separate the desk by ten, you know, have ten desks in there separated by six feet.
Right. In most classrooms, it should work, there, there are exceptions to everything, anytime you, you enter into something. But we certainly have, you know, again, we're trusting principals and administrators as they're working through this.
Okay.
To, to say, hey, you know, this is a little larger class, because it's a fourth or fifth grade class, they can have larger numbers. So, you mind swapping, swapping with one of our fourth or fifth grade classrooms, and would you mind going to their kindergarten classroom or vice versa? So.
A lot of flexibility.
Right, lots of flexibility.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Putnam? Or Dr. Nolte?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other.
What would the board like to do now? We've listened and.
If there's, if there's not any more questions, I didn't, I don't wanna interrupt anybody from asking, but at this time, and I'm gonna try to phrase this right, and, you know, I, I make a motion that we begin the transition, Plan B. With that said, I wanna remind the families that you have a choice to, to continue in remote learning. Nobody's being forced into Plan B. There's still the option of remote learning, but as part of Plan B. So, I would move that we begin that transmission or transition into Plan B as described earlier by Dr. Nolte, which includes some details that has to be worked out.
Would that be Plan F? Would that be Plan F?
Option F.
Option F.
Plan B.
Plan B, Option F is what the motion is.
Okay.
Okay, from Dr. Rogers, do I hear a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Henson has made the second. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd like to say is, I'm glad that we are doing transition into Plan B through Option F. As a motion stated, I do not agree that we have any kind of lay of Plan, or a delay of Plan B, but under Option F, we do. We, the superintendent has recommended a month, which I feel like they will be students falling through the crack within that month, for the reason of not having access of remote learning. But I am glad to see that we are going to lean towards Plan B in a month.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Uh, yes, I'm, like I stated earlier, I'd like to see that light switch lit up a little bit quicker than a month, four weeks. I know we'll, I know our system, we'll diligently try to make that happen, and that's why, you know, I, I, yeah, I was wanting Plan B, and, and I'm like Mr. Kirkpatrick, I'm thinking, we're still, we're, we're gonna lose some kids in a month. We've already lost some kids, though, previously. I mean, from March till now, we've already lost a lot of, a lot of learning capabilities from some children that just were not wanting to get it, could not get it, was not able to get it, didn't have the, the ability to, to pipe into our, to our own virtually online schools. And again, with, with Dr. Rogers' comment, yes, families, please realize, you're not being forced into something. You have an option, you have a choice. You have something that we're, we're trying to make this work for everybody out there, 'cause we do, as a, well, I won't speak for the board again too, but I'm sure the feeling is mutual that safety is our number-one priority too. We want these children to be safe. We want them to be able to grow up and be, become young adults and leaders of our system, and to take care of us when we get old too. You know, we, we're, we're just.
When you get old.
Thankful for that. Yeah, when I get old. I'll tell you, it's getting closer. But again, yes, the hybrid transition, at least we are moving towards, towards Plan B, 'cause I want to see those kids in the classroom, I think we all do. I think that is our ultimate goal. And let's, let's, let's push them, let's, let's move as fast as we can to get to that date. Yeah, I'd still like to see September twenty-first a little quicker, but we know it, we know it's gonna take that time to determine who wants to be there and who doesn't. But thank you again for your hard work through our staff, and Dr. Putnam, and Ms. Jill, and Dr. Nolte. We thank y'all very much for that. So, yeah, we will continue forward, but please, citizens, and please still, you know, there's still time for our community and our citizens to give your input, you know? Let us, let us know what, what you're feeling, what you're thinking, and I, I wanna thank all those who've, who have, we've had a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, and a lot of comments from those citizens in the community and teachers, I'd say, students, parents, and thank you for that input, and, and thank you for your prayers on us as a board to, to make the right decisions. And we've had a lot of that, to them, say they feel for us, and, and thank y'all for that, as far as the public goes.
I just wanna add to that, that, you know, I, again, thank everyone out there for sending the emails and text messages and phone calls to us, and that we have, we, we are trying to hear you, and that we are here for you, and, and trying to make the decision, best decision for everyone involved. So, thank you. Piggybacking off of his comments there.
I wanna piggyback this a little bit too. I mean, I've honestly told, over this decision, I've talked to parents, teachers, students, what do you want, what can be best? Everybody's got an opinion. Is this perfect? No. I mean, but we're trying to do.
I mean, but we're trying to do the best with what we got for the students of Haywood County. And I know without a doubt that our staff, our administrators, teachers, will do a great job with what we've got to work with. I mean, we don't have much choice. And with that said, we move forward, I guess.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to say one thing, I do want to follow up with what Mr. Hines is going to find out about, if you would communicate that, not only to the board, but to the public, especially our staff, our teachers, so they'll know that we, you know, I care about their safety as, as much as any, so we want to make sure that comes back through. And again, thank you for all the work, it's been tremendous. Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
I guess that's it.
Okay. I'm going to call for a voice vote, and I'll slow it down this time again. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, we have Mr. Kirkpatrick voting in the negative, the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before we, before we move on to the next item on our agenda, if it's appropriate, Mr. Parliament, I, I'd like to bring another motion before this board, and, and this, this motion's really a directive.
Okay.
To, in an effort to help, one of our greatest concerns, as Stephen has very well pointed out, is those kids who may not have internet access, et cetera, availability. As we learn about those issues, bring them to us as soon as possible, so that we can...
Maybe we can help do something.
Maybe we can help. I don't know if that's just a statement or a motion, I don't know.
I don't think it needs to be a motion, but it's, it's part of the reopening schools plan, and that's a directive, so.
And, and the second, the second thing I'd like to, another statement maybe, is the, as you, like you, like I said, and I, I really feel for you guys, because this mandate is ever-changing, and as it changes, I hope that y'all will, will communicate that to the public, to the family units, without waiting on a board meeting to do it. To me, they need to know.
Oh, yeah.
As soon as we know, so they can make decisions based on their families.
Let the information flow.
Can I, I guess I want to piggyback, since everybody's talking about piggybacking tonight. I'll be piggybacking on what Mr. Rogers said there, or Dr. Rogers, is, and I guess this might be another question, also, is that we need to know about the internet issue, everything else. I mean, obviously, I have a little bit more insight than some people do. But here's a question, has the county commissioners, now, I'm not throwing nobody under the bus, I want to make sure the public knows this, and the county commissioners know this, I'm not throwing nobody under the bus. Have we been contacted by county commissioners? Have you been contacted by county commissioners to see if there's something that we can do together?
I have.
Maybe financially?
I have, I've had at least one board chairman, not the chairman, but one of the commissioners to reach out and say, you know, let's talk, and if you need something, contact me.
Okay.
There has been one outreach.
All right, because like I said, I don't want to throw nobody under the bus, whether it's this board, because I guess.
From a county commissioner as well.
That's right.
Uh, Dr. Putnam was telling me about another incident where he had received a call checking on us in this situation, and asking, or offering to help if they could.
Well, and that's.
And they didn't offer a specific thing, but they did make contact, and were concerned about our situation.
And that's the only thing, I want to make sure that, like I said, I'm not throwing nobody under the bus, but where does the school system get their funding? There are three places, federal, state, local. I just want everybody to know that, when it comes to anything that we need, we get, we get, have three pots of money. And I was just wondering if anybody's, any doubt? If you need us, we're here.
Now, I, I think, without, you know, over-answering or belaboring the point, early on in the budgeting process, the county indicated that they had lost a significant number, a significant amount of revenue due to sales in the county, but they made a commitment to keep us on the revised funding formula that was better for us. I don't know that that provides extra money to, to do anything about infrastructure, but I do know that there's lots of work being done by organizations encouraging the state legislature, or folks with bigger pockets, to provide some incentives, or providers of broadband and, and other services, or high-speed internet connection. So I do know a lot of that is going on, and we've been a part of some of those discussions. One of the, you know, one of the things that we did was enter into a regional collaboration, we probably need Kim Guffey here to talk about that, or Dr. Putnam can talk about that too, but we reader, we entered into a regional collaboration regarding some Wi-Fi spots, and we know that those still don't work everywhere, you want to talk about that just a little bit?
I can't remember the proper name, and my computer has died on me, it's been kind of busy, so it's just quit. So, but I can tell you, there's a statewide consortium, a rural community mission, something along those lines. We've entered, entered cooperation with that consortium, and we'll be able to provide two-hundred-and-forty-three Kajit hotspots. As our state sometimes does, they make it difficult to spend the money, we had some money available, it was earmarked that it could be used for devices, but it could not pay for service. So this, again, I wish I could remember the proper name, as they've purchased the device, if we'll purchase the device, they'll provide the service for free. So it allowed us to maximize these devices, and there's two-hundred-and-forty-three of them. Also, again, I'll direct you back to the donation made on, on the part of this board to the county on access points, there were fifty of those, and we are working with the county to make sure those are placed at community centers and other places, so that a worst-case scenario, a kid could walk down to the fire station or to a community center and access the internet there as well. So, we've already made efforts or strides in that direction. The goal is one-hundred percent for every child we can, and, for every child who needs it. It's hard to make those promises, because even when you have the device and the service, as, as those of you know, there are just dead spots. It does not matter how hard you try, it is a dead spot. And so, but our goal will be to map or coverage every child we can.
Very good.
Well, and too, there's, this, this is going to come off wrong, and I, I really don't mean for it to, but in our church, we have Wi-Fi available. We will unlock that and make it available for anybody who wants to pull in to the parking lot and use it, but we'll unlock it and it'll be available to you. And, and I'm sure, we've got a hundred-and-eighty-five or so churches in the county, those that, that are available to do that, you know, I challenge them to consider that, they're well-spread out through the communities.
I'm sure they will. Given that challenge that came from Dr. Rogers, I'd say they'll be right there with it. Excellent. Excellent discussion. Okay. Well, you want to move on to personnel? Dr. Putnam's going to do it tonight, that's very good. Okay.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for your information, you have two separation from employment, thirteen employee status changes. For your approval, you have ten employments, four employee status changes, one leave of absence, six employee coaches, three non-employee coaches, and two band volunteers.
I make a motion we approve personnel as presented.
Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
So, Mr. Rogers, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Have to wait for old Ronnie to come through there. Thanks, Ronnie, for being with us tonight. I hope you feel better, and I didn't mention it, but Ronnie's, Mr. Clark, has been through two surgeries, so our prayers and concerns and thoughts are for you, Ronnie, tonight, and for Rachel taking care of you. So have a good evening. Meeting adjourned. Yes, sir, meeting adjourned.